E minute, Gentai Dawson, La Hesler, Tern Guahan is called to order. We have one. Okay, we are now on the voting file. I will start with bill number seventy-two dash thirty-two L.S.
Bill number seventy-two dash thirty-two L.S., as amended on the floor, introduced by V. Anthony Ada, an act to add new sections two-two-two-eight and two-two-two-nine to chapter twenty-two of Title Fifteen Guam Code Annotated, relative to including digital assets in a descendent estate.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, excused. Senator Limtiaco.
Yes.
Senator Limtiaco, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Risfischel. Senator Risfischel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Bill number seventy-two dash thirty-two received fourteen yea votes and one excused absence. Bill number seventy-two dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number fifty-eight dash thirty-two C.O.R.
Bill number fifty-eight dash thirty-two C.O.R., as substituted by the Committee on Education, Public Library, and Women’s Affairs, and amended on the floor, introduced by V. Anthony Ada, an act to amend section six-six-zero-two and six-six-zero-three to recodify six-six-zero-three as section six-one-two-one and to add a new section six-seven-zero-three, all of chapter six of Title Seventeen Guam Code Annotated, relative to protection of student information.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, excused. Senator Limtiaco. Senator Limtiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Risfischel. Senator Risfischel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Bill number fifty-eight dash thirty-two received fourteen yea votes and one excused absence. Bill number fifty-eight dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number sixteen dash thirty-two C.O.R.
Bill number sixteen dash thirty-two C.O.R., introduced by R.J. Risfischel, Chris M. Duñez, an act to rezone lot two-one-eight-one dash four-new dash R-one-new dash R-two, lot two-one-eight-one dash four-new dash R-one-new dash two, lot two-one-eight-one dash four-new dash one dash one, lot two-one-eight-one dash four-new dash one dash two, lot two-one-eight-one dash four-new dash one dash three, lot two-one-eight-one dash four-new dash one dash four, lot two-one-eight-one dash four-new dash one dash R-four, and lot Naval Air Station Agania dash R-two, I’m sorry, dash-two-one dash R-one, Airport Parcel Four, in the municipality of Tezen Baragada, from agricultural zone A to light industrial zone M-one, and to amend section six-one-two-zero-one of Article Two, Chapter Sixty-one of Title Twenty-one, Guam Code Annotated, relative to changing the reference of M-one limited industrial zone to M-one light industrial zone.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, excused. Senator Limtiaco. Senator Limtiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, nay. Senator Risfischel. Senator Risfischel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Pass. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Pass. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Pass. Speaker Wampat, nay. Bill number sixteen dash thirty-two received twelve yea votes, two nays, and one absence. Bill number sixteen dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number eighteen dash thirty-two C.O.R.
Bill number eighteen dash thirty-two C.O.R., as amended on the floor, introduced by R.J. Risfischel, T.R. Munia Barnes, an act to appropriate the sum of three-hundred-ninety-two-thousand-one-hundred-sixty-two dollars and seventeen cents from anticipated general fund revenues for fiscal year two thousand thirteen for the outstanding debt balance owed, including principal and interest, for the completion of the Guam Public Market Redevelopment Project, Phase Two Department of Commerce Project Number including change order number one and change order number two.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, excused. Senator Limtiaco. Senator Limtiaco, nay. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, nay. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Risfischel. Senator Risfischel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, nay. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Pass. Speaker Wampat, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, nay. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, nay. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Pass. Speaker Wampat, nay. Bill number eighteen dash thirty-two received six yea votes. Bill eighteen dash thirty-two received six yea votes, eight nay votes, and one excused absence. Bill number eighteen dash thirty-two failed to get the required vote to be passed. Bill number fifty-two dash thirty-two.
Bill number fifty-two dash thirty-two L.S., introduced by T.C. Ada, R.J. Risfischel, an act to repeal section two-two-four-two-one of Article Four of Chapter Twenty-two, Title Five, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the transfer of autonomous agency revenues to the Autonomous Agency Collections Fund.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, excused. Senator Limtiaco. Senator Limtiaco, nay. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, nay. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, nay. Senator Risfischel. Senator Risfischel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, no, nay. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, nay. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, nay. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Pass. Speaker Wampat, aye. Speaker Wampat. Pass. Speaker Wampat, nay. Bill number fifty-two dash thirty-two received five yea votes, nine nays, and one excused absence. Bill number fifty-two dash thirty-two failed to get the required votes. Bill number fifty-three dash thirty-two.
Bill number fifty-three dash thirty-two C.O.R., introduced by B.J.F. Cruz, an act to repeal section three-three-one-zero-five of Chapter Thirty-three and to amend section three-one-one-zero-nine-D of Article Seventeen, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the procurement authority of the Guam Community College.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, excused. Senator Limtiaco. Senator Limtiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Risfischel. Senator Risfischel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Bill number fifty-three dash thirty-two received fourteen yea votes and one excused absence. Bill number fifty-three dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number fifty-six dash thirty-two.
Bill number fifty-six dash thirty-two C.O.R., as amended by the Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns, and Future Generations, introduced by B.J.F. Cruz, T.C. Ada, an act to repeal and reenact section nine-one-zero-eight of Chapter Nine of Title Sixteen, Guam Code Annotated, relative to changing the penalty for violation of the traffic code from a petty misdemeanor to a civil violation punishable by a fine.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, excused. Senator Limtiaco. Senator Limtiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Risfischel. Senator Risfischel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Pass, I’m sorry, Senator Pangolinen, aye. Sergeant Arms, find out who that is. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Okay, guys, own up to it. Whose cell phone was that? We’re counting on your honor to own up to it. Bill number fifty-six dash thirty-two received fourteen yea votes and one excused absence. Bill fifty-six dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number seventy-six dash thirty-two.
Bill number seventy-six dash thirty-two C.O.R., as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and Land, and further amended on the floor, introduced by Frank B. Uggan Jr., an act to amend sections one-six-one-point-one-five, one-six-one-point-one-two-five, and one-six-one-point-one-three-zero, and to add a new subsection D to section one-six-one-point-nine-five, all of chapter one-hundred-sixty-one of Title Eight, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the efficient implementation of the mandates of the Criminal Injuries Compensation Commission.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, nay. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, excused. Senator Limtiaco. Senator Limtiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Risfischel. Senator Risfischel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Limtiaco. Senator Limtiaco, aye. Bill number seventy-six dash thirty-two received thirteen yea votes, one nay, and... No, you guys. Bill number seventy-six dash thirty-two received thirteen yea votes, one nay, and one excused absence. Bill number seventy-six dash thirty-two C.O.R. is duly passed by this body. Bill number sixty-two dash thirty-two C.O.R.
Bill number sixty-two dash thirty-two C.O.R., as substituted by the Committee on Health and Human Services, Insurance Reform, Economic Development, and Senior Citizens, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., Aileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., Grant T. McCready, an act to add a new Article Ten to Chapter Three of Division One, Title Ten, Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing the Guam Council on Child Death Review and Prevention, C.C.D.R.P.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, excused. Senator Limtiaco. Senator Limtiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Risfischel. Senator Risfischel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Bill number sixty-two dash thirty-two received fourteen yea votes and one excused absence. Bill number sixty-two dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number sixty-five dash thirty-two.
Bill number sixty-five dash thirty-two C.O.R., as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations and Cultural Affairs, introduced by Michael F. Kuesten Nicholas, an act to add a new section four-three-one-one-six to Article One of Chapter Forty-three, Division Four of Title Five, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the providing for educational- four of Title five Guam Code annotated relative to the providing for educational programs for members of boards and commissions.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, nay. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, excused. Senator Lim Tiako. Senator Lim Tiako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Risfischo. Senator Risfischo, nay. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye.
Bill number sixty-five dash thirty-two received twelve ye votes, two nays, and one excused absence. Bill number sixty-five dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number sixty-seven dash thirty-two COR.
Bill number sixty-seven dash thirty-two COR as amended on the floor. Introduced by Vicente Bency Pangolinan, T.R. Munya Barnes. An act to amend Section two and Section three B and to add a new Section four of Public Law twenty-four dash thirty-three relative to amending the license agreement between the Guam Football S.O.C.C.E.R. Association and the Government of Guam.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, pass. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, excused. Senator Lim Tiako. Senator Lim Tiako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Risfischo. Senator Risfischo, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, pass. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Yes.
Uggan.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill number sixty-seven dash thirty-two COR received fourteen ye votes and one excused absence. Bill number sixty-seven dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number seventy-three dash thirty-two LS.
Bill number seventy-three dash thirty-two LS as substituted by the Committee on Health and Human Services, Insurance Reform, Economic Development and Senior Citizens and amended on the floor. Introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., BJ F Cruz, Eileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., Michael T. Lim Tiako, Frank B. Uggan Jr., Judith T. Wampat, E.D.D., Vicente Bency Pangolinan, T.R. Munya Barnes. An act to amend the title of Chapter eighty-six, Section eight-six-one-zero-two-A and Section eight-six-one-zero-three all of Title ten Guam Code annotated relative to renaming the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse, DMHSA, to the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, GBHWC, and to allow for changes to other relevant laws as necessary solely for consistency with the agency's name change.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, excused. Senator Lim Tiako. Senator Lim Tiako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Risfischo. Senator Risfischo, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye.
Bill number seventy-three dash thirty-two LS received fourteen ye votes and one excused absence. Bill number seventy-three dash thirty-two LS is duly passed by this body. Bill number fifty-seven dash thirty-two COR.
Bill number fifty-seven dash thirty-two COR as further substituted by the author on the floor. Introduced by Judith T. Wampat, E.D.D., TC Ada, R.J. Risfischo. An act to amend Section five-three-one-zero-eight and to add a new Section five-three-one-one-zero of Chapter fifty-three of Title five Guam Code annotated and to amend Section three-six-zero-six-B and to add a new Section three-six-zero-six-E of Article six, Chapter three of Title sixteen Guam Code annotated relative to the encroachment of public roadways and public rights of way and to the removal of abandoned vehicles.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, pass. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, excused. Senator Lim Tiako. Senator Lim Tiako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Risfischo. Senator Risfischo, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Uggan.
Bill number fifty-seven dash thirty-two COR received fourteen ye votes and one excused absence. Bill number fifty-seven dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Notwithstanding the objections of Imaga La in Guahan on the matter of vetoed Bill number nine dash thirty-two, I'd like to ask the clerks to please read the bill, the title.
Bill number nine dash thirty-two COR as amended on the floor. Introduced by Vicente Bency Pangolinan, BJ F Cruz, Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr. An act to add new Sections five-eight-one-four-eight, five-eight-one-four-eight-point-one, five-eight-one-four-eight-point-two, five-eight-one-four-eight-point-three, and five-eight-one-four-nine and to amend Sections five-eight-one-two-six and five-eight-one-one-five-C all of Chapter fifty-eight of Title twelve Guam Code annotated relative to establishing the Qualifying Certificate Review Board and the Qualifying Certificate Accountability and Transparency Website and amending Conflicts of Interest provisions.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, pass. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, excused. Senator Lim Tiako. Senator Lim Tiako, nay. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, nay. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, pass. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Risfischo. Senator Risfischo, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, nay. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye.
On the matter of vetoed Bill number nine dash thirty-two, notwithstanding the objections of Imaga La in Guahan, the votes are nine yays, five nays, and one excused absence. Bill number nine dash thirty-two failed to get the required votes to be overwritten. With exhausted all the items on the voting file, Senator Risfischo, you're recognized for a motion.
Madam Speaker, I understand there was a discussion on the matter of Bill eighty-eight sponsored by Senator Siniklis and its relative to the regulation of alcoholic beverage licenses. This bill, as we know, is still on the second reading file. However, when we adjourned this session, the bill, I believe, will become the jurisdiction of the Committee on Rules. And so I understand that additional work needs to be done on this bill. So what I'm proposing to the body, as I've suggested to the author, is that we refer this bill back to the committee jurisdiction so that he would have the authority and the flexibility to work through those issues, report whatever version he wants to report out to the Committee on Rules, and then from rules we can decide to either place it on the agenda or we can also decide to place it on the agenda when we're in the sessions. So I think that's most... Otherwise, if it becomes a property of the Committee on Rules, the author may not have as much flexibility as he would have if it weren't under his jurisdiction. So I, notwithstanding the House rules in concurrence with the sponsor of the bill, I move that Bill number eighty-eight dash three-two be referred to the committee jurisdiction.
On that motion, Senator Uggan.
Madam Speaker, just because the legislation was discussed during the course of this particular session, I'd like to add to that motion that all amendments be intact and the version be referred back to the committee. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Either way, Madam Speaker, I have no objections and I thank Senator Uggan for that clarification. So the motion is to refer the version, the most latest version, with all the amendments intact back to the committee jurisdiction, and then that committee can decide whether or not they want to go with that version or whatever version the committee feels necessary and they know just work its way back up through the legislative process.
On the motion, without any objections, so ordered. Senator Risfischo.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And Madam Speaker, I move that we adjourn subject to call of the...
Recede. We have... I'm going to take a brief recess. Legislature is back in session. Senator Respecho, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we adjourn subject to the call of the speaker.
On that motion, then, without an objection, so ordered. We are adjourned.